All right, I'd like to call this May 17th, 2012, Cookeville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Okay, and I think we have some special guests here in the front row. I think it's the Student Council from Avery Trace. And we're gonna do something a little different tonight. Actually, Mr. Ben Weaver, he's the President of the Student Council. We're gonna ask him to lead us in the pledge. So if you would, come up to the podium over there. And first, Ben, what we're gonna do is have a moment of silence, and then I'll let you know, and you can start the pledge, okay? So if everyone will please stand for a moment of silence. Ben, take it away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Good job, Ben.
That's the best we've ever done.
I think it is, too. Thank you for coming, guys. Okay, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented. We have additions to the agenda. Addition, subtractions.
We need to add two items. Item 10, consider approval of repair of brush truck, Public Works Department, sponsor Greg Brown. Item 11, receive grant from Firehouse Subs, Fire Department, sponsor Roger Fuqua.
All right, we have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, recognition of seven new City of Cookeville Energy Leaders and presentations of their certificates, and sponsors Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and Council, it's with pleasure, I get to introduce these folks in just a minute. Let me pause just a second to just say a special thanks to you guys, City Manager, the Department Directors, and everyone involved in making this program possible. We've tried to do the training and the Energy Leader Meetings during lunch, but there is a little lapse there. They're having to leave a little bit early, come in a little bit late, and just really appreciate y'all's support in that. With that, I'd like to ask Connie to come down front and award the certificates as I call the names.
You take instruction well, don't you, Tony?
We've been doing quite a bit of training this week, getting some new energy leaders on board and recognizing them tonight. Some are replacements, and some, we saw a need to add additional ones in some of the other facilities. So with that, our first new energy leader is Tracy Johnson. Tracy, if you would, go on up, please.
Should we hold our applause for the question?
Yes, please. Tracy, if you would, yes, if you would stay there, please. Corey Albers with the Electra Department. Jude Hootup with the Gas Department. Notice I said that fast, Jude, in case I mispronounced it.
Be mugging, you're gonna be mugging back there, Jim. There you go, we'll get you in there.
Could we get you to stay up there, and the rest of you guys go up there and stand beside Connie off to the side? Thank you. We'll wanna do a group picture here just in a minute. Our next new energy leader is Marie Jaisik with the Cookeville Police Department.
Jaisik.
And last but not least, here with us tonight is John Buford with the Water Quality Control Department. Karen, if you would, just get everybody together with Connie there, and let's get one group picture. And while they're doing that, I'll mention two other folks that could not be here with us tonight. Paul Parrish with the Fire Department, and Reagan Austin with Leisure Services. Additionally, I'd like to recognize the, I guess, old energy leaders, if not proper current, energy leaders that we have here with us tonight. Stand up when I call your name and be recognized, would you? Nadine Scherer with the Police Department, Jen Webb, Leisure Services, Brian Stam. What department you in now? General Department? Karen Brown with the Electra Department, Jeff Mills back in the back with the Gas Department. To you guys and the new folks, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Now, I believe we're gonna receive an update on the Cookeville Unplugged Program.
I'm pleased again to be able to make this presentation for Melinda. She had to be out of town tonight. Bear with me, please, as I go through this. Wanted to just give you a basic update of what had happened in the last year with the Cookeville Unplugged Program, share a few success stories with you. You can see those there, we'll go through them individually. First one is the, you've heard about this, but I'm gonna refresh your memory, is the Electric Power Research Institute LED pilot that Cookeville was chosen for systems in the southeastern part of the United States. Not sure how we did it, but we got invited. They basically gave us 14 high-pressure sodium lights. We installed those in the lower parking lot as part of that pilot. EPRI did monitor those for about six to eight months. And they had done a lot of lavatory testing, and they wanted to get some out in the field to make sure they were as good as what everybody was saying they were. That resulted in about a $386 a year of savings. We followed that with a $100,000 grant that the City of Cookeville was successful in getting to not only do the rest of City Hall, but some other projects as well. You can see there's those there. Phase one of the project, including, again, finishing City Hall, doing City Hall entrance, Cedar Street, Walnut Street Parking Lot, Chamber of Commerce, their entire parking lot, Boyd Street Parking Lot, and the original section of Dogwood Park. Once we got all that done, we realized we had bought the LED fixtures a lot cheaper than we thought initially we were gonna be able to, so we had money left. So we applied for an amendment. That was successful. And in Phase Two, it says pending, but that's complete. Phase Two included all of Kane Creek Park, the West End Park, overall Spring and Broad, the Electra Department Parking Lot, and the Cookeville Police Department Parking Lot. Total, we replaced 121 high-pressure sodium fixtures with LED fixtures for an annual kilowatt-hour savings of 80,000 kilowatt-hours, which amounted to about $7,800 a year in savings. Next, one of the other projects, and we just chose a few, but, you know, all the departments, all the facilities have success stories, and we'll be sharing those later in other presentation. But the Water Department was able to turn off 16 KW of lighting at their water plant down on Center Hill Lake for an annual savings of about $14,000. They additionally took three 45-gallon water heaters out of service for an approximate savings of $1,500 a year. Leisure Services Rec Center, Jen was instrumental, and Reagan Austin, in meeting with us and talking about some of the operation there, and they were able to turn off 22 and 1/2 KW of gym lighting for 17 hours a day for an annual savings of $2,500 a year. And they installed motion sensors in their restrooms and storage, some storage areas for additional $150 a year savings. At the Electra Department, as I alluded to earlier, we changed out 37 lights down there, two LEDs for a total savings of about $3,245 a year. Another thing the group was quite proud of is a Lunch and Learn series that the energy leaders put on over at the Gas Department. Four sessions, weekly, four in a row, over 50 employees participated, with 32 attending all four sessions. During that, TBA was involved in providing us with a lot of literature and stuff for those meetings, and they even done some presentations for us. They challenged the group that was there, and all the departments and city government, to go online and do an energy audit for your home. That was well received. The results ended by most all of the Electric Department employees and all of the Gas Department employees, and TBA felt bad trying to choose a winner, so they made us co-winners and fed both of us breakfast for doing that. Next picture is of the Lunch and Learn series. The lady on top, Beth Stephanie Roberts, the folks that work here know her. And the happy gentleman there in the bottom right is Shane Waters. He won an LED TV for attending all four sessions of the Lunch and Learn. Here comes the main part. Cookeville Unplugged started like in November 2010. That's when Fleet Guard approached, or Cummins Filtration approached us. And our first challenge was in Christmas of 2010. And what we wanted to do a few months ago is, you know, what's the result of all of our efforts? So we looked at usage data on 22 facilities back in October 2010 before Cookeville Unplugged, before anything was being done, energy efficiency-wise, at least ramped up, energy efficiency-wise, and compared that to October 2011. And so it was, the information was qualified by using degree day data, and so we felt really good about TBA's comparisons. The analysis, as I mentioned, took into account degree day data, and then there were like five of those facilities that not only were charged, are being charged, a kilowatt-hour charge, but a demand charge as well. When you get over like 50 KW, there's demand charges associated. So we were able to include the demand savings on five of those facilities. In summary, the total energy usage was reduced by 44,629 kilowatt-hours and 31 kilowatts for a monthly savings of $4,775 a month. Now, almost near $5,000 a month there, we probably are, but some other things that are going on, $60,000 a year savings, if you used October as a guideline, which I think that would be good. Additionally, we didn't include that $14,000 that they're saving down at the water plant, plus the $1,500 or so. So really and truly, I think Cookeville Unplugged efforts are probably saving the City of Cookeville $75,000 a year right now, as we speak. So very proud of that, and I know these guys are as well. Just some other items of success. Melinda, with Jim's help and lots of others, submitted a Tennessee Clean Energy Grant to replace the heating and cooling system here at City Hall. Gym City Hall was built, and the cooling system installed back in the early '60s, I think.
Well, we put one U N in, but it's 25 years old, probably.
Okay, good. There's lots of problems here, as most anyone could attest. So we've applied for a $250,000 matching grant through that Tennessee Clean Energy Grant. Haven't had any word yet. We feel pretty good about it, and that's part of that money that the State of Tennessee got with the EPA, TBA lawsuit settlement. They got $26 million to be used over a five-year period. So there's about, there was about $5 million hanging out there, so we've applied for some of that. And, let's see, a couple of other things that we've done that we're quite proud of is there's now shutdown procedures for holidays, after-hours, weekends for all those facilities. Here's a list of things that you need to do before you go home, and that's attributed to a lot of the savings that I mentioned to you earlier. And also, Kathy, I think you're gonna need to help me here. We have, not that one. Let me back up here.
Yeah, back up.
Hit previous.
That Cookeville logo there, after the last bullet item, that was supposed to link us to that website, and Kathy, you should be able to click on that and go to the website. Blow that up, if you would, maximize that, Kathy. And if I can remember the address, it is energy.cookville-tn.org. You can go to that. We haven't directly linked it to the City of Cookeville's website just yet. It's under repair. It's a work in progress, if you will. Kathy, if you would X that out, please. Should go back to where we were at. That's basically, let me read my notes here. Maybe I have another slide. Lots of other things going on, as I mentioned earlier, that weren't included in the success stories. I know Jeff Mills at the Gas Department's got a lot of stuff going on over there. So that $70,000 to $75,000 in annual savings. We're hoping the next time we give a report to you, that's a well and accessible $100,000 a year. And once we get all of the no-cost, low-cost things done, which is all we've been doing, basically, we're gonna start looking at energy audits and looking at stuff that actually costs money to do, but it's got very low payback periods, and hoping to someday grow that number to a quarter of a million dollars. That's basically my report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, or we'll get one of these energy leaders to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. That's pretty amazing numbers.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
Especially when you're talking about no-cost, low-cost, and it's a great example, I think, that the City of Cookeville is setting for everyone, and it's just a matter of unplugging and not using electricity when you're not using it.
Yeah, it's certainly been gratifying to be a part of this, and as Connie knows full well, I think she's been there, her meeting that we've had, and sits on a little executive committee that we get together and try to make decisions. But it's been gratifying to see these folks take charge and see the interest that's generated, and just look forward to that continuing. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, being good stewards of energy and taxpayers' money.
Especially at budget time.
Especially at budget time.
All right, on to old business. Item four, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 3rd, 2012. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. All right, any questions? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item five, consider on second and final reading, ordnance 120404, amendments to the official street map, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and Council members, as you stated, this is second and final reading of amendments to the major street map. We're proposing to add portions or all of Seven Streets that have been added due to construction or new subdivision or annexation. Here's the actual list. We've had no calls or comments since first reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, council? Any from the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. On to new business. I think we have Mr. Tony Peak sponsoring something, we'll see if he comes back. Wish you had some questions for you, James, I guess. All right, item six, consider approval of Cookeville Unplugged Energy Efficiency Recommendation, sponsors Mr. Tony Peak.
Thank you, Mayor, apologize for that. The group that you just saw, all year long, they have been coming up with certain recommendations that they wanted to recommend to the City Council and get you to buy into those by approving them. And those are, item one is, all facilities should look at their water heaters that they have, wrap or insulate those if at all possible. All facilities should use compact fluorescents or LEDs opposed to incandescent lights where Daily, weekend, and holiday shutdown procedures should be followed by each department and facility. I feel really good that that is being done after I saw the savings at the different facilities. All new construction that the city undertakes, remodeling projects, decisions should be made with maximum energy efficiency in mind. I know for a fact that people are talking about that, the water plant, for instance, all that's going on there. Ronnie's folks, Roger Phillips and Jeff especially, Jeff Cook, they're calling us all the time about things they could look at and things they could do. Number five, new HVAC purchases for all the city at any of the facilities should require energy efficiency measures in the bid specs or in the request for quotations, and those include payback calculations. Motion sensing light switches should be installed in all kitchens, restrooms, and meeting rooms. So when, you know, meeting rooms, when everybody's gone, the lights are gonna turn themselves off, somebody comes back in, they'll turn back up. Lot of energy savings involved in that. Establish standard thermostat settings for HVAC and water heaters where possible. We recently installed programmable thermostats at the Electra Department. Those are working quite well. When we leave in the afternoon at 5:00, during the cooling season, instead of it being at 72, it kicks itself up to 78 degrees, so it's not coming on when we're not there. In the mornings, we've got it set to go back to 72, like at 6:00 in the morning, and it ramps itself up to get up, or get back down to 72. All facilities, it's something easy to forget, just like at your home. All facilities should caulk, seal, and weather strip all areas possible. Cities should consider other energy efficiency measures such as water usage, that I know Connie's working with Ronnie Kelly on. E-waste, motor oil waste, recycling practices in vehicle purchases. The city should establish an energy efficiency manual, which we've been talking about for many months now, with standards for procurement of items such as light bulbs, computers, power strips, et cetera. That's those. I don't think there's anything on there that would cause anybody very much grief, and recommends your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
No.
I want to say, thanks, Mr. Peak, for all your leadership in this, and Melinda and all the energy leaders, and also, I want to thank Councilman Albright for her leadership and the time she's put into this, because this is a, we feel it's a very important issue, and, you know, starts here, and it can hopefully go to county, other cities, and other industry all across the board, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordnance 120507, amending the budgets for the various funds, departments of the City of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended 6/30/12, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, it's hard to imagine, but fiscal year 2012 is coming to an end, and with that brings the necessity to consider some budget amendments for four of the 16 funds that the city has. And with the general fund, I ask you to recognize we have additional revenue of estimated $782,000, with over $400,000 of that being generated by revenue from the sales tax collections within the city. Have additional revenue of $50,000 related to property tax, another $50,000 related to city court costs and city court fines. We also have grant revenue that we've received throughout the year that totals $165,000. So the other line items there, too, is the total $782,000 in additional revenue. Now, we also have some additional expenditures to recognize. Those expenditures, $165,000, that is related directly to those grants that we received. We also have some operating expenditures, and just to point out a couple of big-ticket items that's listed in the operating section there, but that's really, $230,000, as you see there, is for dump trucks. That's a line item that we had originally anticipated borrowing funds to buy those trucks for Public Works, but we have additional revenue to offset that, so there's no need to go out and borrow those funds for that. We also had $77,000 for heating and cooling units at the Performing Arts Center. Again, that was an item we were gonna look at borrowing funds for that, but we have the additional revenue to offset that as well. There are some other items there related to liability claims and work comp claims. Those are tough to budget at the beginning of the year, and so this is recognizing those additional expenditures. But in total, we have additional expenditures of $627,469. This would increase that. But in total, we have revenue to offset that, so we will be adding to increasing the fund balance in the general fund for the fiscal year. Anytime, stop me if you have any questions about any of this.
I'm not stopping, he's rolling.
You're doing good.
Okay, all right.
Talking about increases.
The next fund to consider is our state street aid fund. We have additional revenue there of $25,100 and additional expenditures there of $15,100. The additional expenditures relates to a grant that we received to construct sidewalks to Jerry Whitson School. So so far, there's $15,100 this fiscal year we spent on that project. The next fund to consider is our sanitation fund. We have additional revenue where we sold a vehicle, one of the san- We have additional revenue where we sold a vehicle, one of the sanitation trucks, for $20,000 to recognize that. And then we have additional expenditures of $50,000, so we will be spending into this fund balance. We'd planned on spending into this fund balance at the beginning of the year. That was part of the planned budget for the sanitation fund. Just to point out, $40,000 of that additional $50,000 in expenditures is repair on one of the residential side load trucks. And the last fund that I'd ask you to consider approving budget amendments for is the animal control fund. We have additional $26,000 in revenue for the animal control fund with additional $25,000 in expenditures in that fund. Those expenditures are related to additional drug supplies for the animals, as well as some improvements, security improvements we made at that facility, which totaled over $10,000. And those improvements we made can be transferred over to any new facility that we purchased to. They'll be moved to that new facility. But that's all I have for you to consider, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from council? Comments? I'd just like to say it's a good thing that we're increasing all these revenues.
Yes, to help offset.
Yeah, it's always a good thing.
And it's always good to be able to find the money to buy something instead of borrowing.
Instead of borrowing.
That's good.
Yeah. Any questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item eight, consider awarding bid for the construction of Seventh Street improvements. Public Works Department sponsors Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we were recently awarded bids for the improvements to part of Seventh Street. This section includes just west of Willa to Armstrong and Medical Center Boulevard. The rest of the improvements to Seventh Street, from Armstrong up to Peachtree, the city forces will be doing. We had it broke out into two sections, road improvements and sanitary sewer installation. The total bid meeting spec from Elk Mountain Construction was $368,269, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Brown, when do you anticipate this to be finished?
We gave the contractor 60 days, so the first, right at the 1st of August, they should be complete.
Good. People that use that road will be happy.
Yes, it will be closed pretty much the whole time until we get finished with the job, so everyone should avoid that area if they could.
That's good.
Elk Mountain's ready to go.
They're going to start Monday morning.
Wow, that's good. So it should be done before tech gets back.
That's our plan, yes.
Okay. All right, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's something we were all excited about, I think, getting this one completed. Item nine, consider awarding bid for addition to the Electric Department facility truck bay, sponsors Mr. Tony Peak. Should've just stayed up there all night.
Yeah, we should've arranged the agenda.
Yeah.
It's the Tony Peak Show.
It's the Tony Peak Show.
He's making you sit down, stand up, go outside, come back.
Mayor and council, as I've spoke with you a couple of times about, this is for the three-bay addition, metal building addition to our equipment, existing equipment shed. And we had six bidders, $85,000, some $742,000 plateau construction. Morris Mayberry was our architect for this project, and we had him meet with plateau and go over everything that was in the bid, and he feels comfortable. James, if you would click that one more time, please, or, I'm sorry. We have a letter from Morris that should have been on the agenda that indicates that he recommends that we go with a low bidder of plateau as a low bidder meeting specifications, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Peak, was this a budgeted item?
It was. Mayor, we had $90,000 budgeted for this project, and as I mentioned at the budget hearings with you guys, some of it's going to roll over into the next fiscal year. We just can't fiscally get it done in time, but it is going to be 85, and we budgeted 90.
Good, under budget. And I also wanted to point out, Mr. Brown, the Seventh Street improvements is right on budget. I mean, so we're good to go there, too. Just wanted to point that out. Any questions, comments?
None.
All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Item 10, consider approval of repair of brush truck. Public Works sponsors Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, in January of this year, one of our brush trucks was involved in a traffic accident. The insurance company decided to total the truck out. They paid us $18,399 for it. Instead of buying a new truck to replace that, we just bought that truck back for $1,600 and decided to repair it. One of the things to repair was the transmission. We thought we would get some money back for the transmission. They take it out, you send the old one off, and they'll give you some credit for it, but it was so badly damaged, we could not get any money back, so the charge was a little bit more than what we had anticipated. Click it one more time. The bill that we've got is for $10,300 to repair that, and I'd request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, item 11, receive grant from Firehouse Subs, the sponsor is from Fire Department Chief Roger Fuquey.
Mayor and council, we were recently awarded a bid for Firehouse Subs for a total $13,050 for a Polaris all-terrain vehicle and trailer. Similar to that, ours is red, or will be red.
I couldn't find a picture of a red one.
We've been needing one of these for, you know, Fall Fun Fest, the ball games, and some of the runs around town, and would've been great to have it the other Friday night when the tornadoes come through. We sent some of our people to chainsaws to help, and it would've been great to have something like that at the time. I just asked that you officially let us accept it. It was a 100% grant. We didn't have to.
100%?
Right. And that includes a trailer?
Yes. Thank you to Firehouse Subs. They've been, make sure everybody go to Firehouse Subs. It's a great place.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, sorry, before we got too far along, I apologize. I would forget it if we didn't do it at the front end.
I just wish we had more businesses doing this.
I know, I know, yes. Gator Firehouse Subs, thank you very much.
Shout out to them, thank you.
That's pretty awesome. They do that quite a bit that you know of? I mean...
The guys that own it are two Jacksonville firefighters. They used to be firefighters.
Wow, that's great.
And they try to give back to the community.
That's awesome.
That is great.
What do we get for Christmas from them? That's awesome.
Hook and ladder.
Yeah.
Hook and ladder, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, this is the part of the meeting where we open the floor to any citizens and/or delegations that would like to get up and say anything. All we do is ask that you state your name, who you're with, and keep it to three minutes if you could. The floor is open to anybody that would like to.
Yeah? Don't feel obligated. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say a word about my student council. They're here tonight, and people don't realize, though, that community pride and community caring starts at a very young age, and I anticipate that most of these young people will go forward in their lives doing some something for their community, their schools, et cetera. Mr. Mills, our principal at Avery Trace Middle School, is here as one of my chaperones tonight, and I appreciate these fine folks coming out and observing a little government in action. This is not exactly the way our meetings go, is it? But, you know, and remember when we dismiss that you all need to stay in the building till I get to you. We leave together.
Sounds like a teacher, doesn't it?
Might be, just might be.
Anything else? Guys, I appreciate you coming, and just keep in mind, you're the next generation of leaders, so stay involved.
Respect to see you guys up here, up here one of these days.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, and thanks for what you do extra in addition to your regular schoolwork. All right, if that's all, this meeting's adjourned.